It's seven o'clock. I'd like to call the January 27th, or Jan- 22nd. It's gonna be one of those nights, folks. The January 22nd, 2019 College Place City Council meeting to order. If we all please stand for our Fledgeman Legion. And Ms. Sherman, would you lead us?
Sir.
The Fledgeman Legion is to defy of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah. It's now time for our moment of silence for reflection and about for the solemnity of the work that we're about to do. We take a short break to reflect on that, please. Thank you all very much. It's our public comment period. Anybody wishing to address the College Place City Council on items not already on the agenda, if you'd please step to the microphone and state your name and address. Seeing none. Seeing no one, I'd like to address the consent agenda. I'd like to make one change to this evening's agenda. That is, I'd like to move item 5.12 memorandum of understanding pertaining to final approval of Phase 3D of Homestead Village PUD. Move that to 5.01. Mr. Peterson.
Could we have the excuse of a member, Jerry Bobbitt?
Well, we can indeed. I believe Mr. Bobbitt is traveling.
Yeah. This is the second week in borderline territory.
So with that, the consent agenda this evening with those changes is approving the agenda, approving the council minutes of January 7th, I believe. And excuse the absence of Councilmember Nyhagen and Councilmember Bobbitt.
January 8. January 8. I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Agenda item 5.01 memorandum of understanding pertaining to the final plan approval of Phase 3D of the Homestead Village PUD. Mr. Rosatello.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. So for this item, this is just memorandum of understanding between the city and then Haven Homes. As you recall, there was an agreement in December. They've been putting essentially wastewater and water lines up on that phase, and they've been making attempts at it. Now that the weather's changed, contouring stormwater correctly has proved to be a challenge. So in this MOU, essentially, they can bond certain infrastructure. It's working okay for winter, but as far as the ultimate final solution, that's gonna need to be a little later. However, in here, there's timelines for pieces of that development that just on the community and in general are essentially key to that neighborhood, such as the park property, the slopes, extension of domes. So there are defined timelines on those key pieces of infrastructure where it says explicitly in there, if it's not developed by the respective dates, that upon notification of them, we will pull bond on it. So it does establish drop dead deadlines for some of that infrastructure. So it's divvied up into phases. There's stuff listed that essentially they've completed already. There's items needed for final plan, and there's items needed for CVO, and then those defined deadlines and conditions. Mr. Thorson is here from Haven Homes tonight, if you have any questions for him, but that basically encapsulates the spirit of this MOU.
Questions for Mr. Rosatello. Is there a motion?
I move to approve Resolution Number 19-04, which adopted memorandum of understanding pertaining to final plan approval of Phase 3D of the Homestead Village PUD.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Peterson, seconded by Ms. Sherman. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Thorson and Mr. Rosatello.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Mr. Rosatello, you can't sit down.
From the top.
Agenda Bill 19010, adoption of Chapter 1, 2.30, vacationer rights away, streets and alleys to the College Place Municipal Code.
Just went over this at the last city council meeting's introduction, cleaned up some little minor grumyackle things in there. Basically, it just sets forward a clear cut process for when we're looking at vacating streets and right of way, what the petition needs to entail, essentially setting forward at this meeting a date for essentially having a hearing on a very similar annexation and then various criteria by which to consider it by. Just to reiterate from the last council meeting, really unless there's a significant rationale, we really shouldn't be vacating the streets and right of way. That was done with the university primarily to save on maintenance costs and because they expressed the desire to essentially get that right of way, and they surrounded it on all sides. But this has a clear cut process. This is just us trying to essentially put everything in a code so that way everything is clear cut.
Questions for Mr. Rosatello. Seeing none. Is there a motion? Mr. Dickerson.
I'm sorry. I think. I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance. Let's see, one of the right ones. Yeah. 19-003. Yeah. Heading Chapter 12.30, vacation right of ways, streets and alleys to the College Place Municipal Code.
It's been moved by Mr. Dickerson, seconded by Mr. Cleveland. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Agenda Bill 19011, replacement, College Place Municipal Code 1.12, city seal and logos. Mr. Rosatello.
This item brings to conclusion the debate about the logo and seal. Essentially, the seal is the seal, and that's for official correspondence. And then the various logos, which is for our marketing events, economic development efforts. You've seen a lot of logos on wayfinding signage, on some of the business cards, on some of our correspondence for International Council of Shopping Centers. So that just formalizes it. A lot of the skeleton of this code comes from Moses Lake because they just went through a similar process. So yeah, and then it just has a color palette, which is also what we use for the wayfinding signage, as in the signage in general. And yeah, we've been using it for various logos and seals, so it just formalizes all of that, and it's actually in the code. Because right now, the city seal code does exist, but it doesn't say what the seal is, and it just says seal with empty spot. So.
Questions for Mr. Rosatello.
We're a lively bunch. I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance number 19-004, which repeals Chapter 1.12 city seal and replaces it with 1.12 city seal and logos as shown in Exhibit 8.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Sherman, seconded by Ms. Selby. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Rosatello. Mr. Hartwig, Agenda Bill 19015, AMI reading.
I presented this to council last meeting as an introduction. The proposal would be to go to a fixed base automated meter reading system. The antenna would be up on the tower and would reach, as part of the presentation we showed you last week, last meeting, the reach would even, would reach all of our areas from that place. We would not need any sub antennas according to their propagation study. Whoa. And we, I even believe after I got to thinking about it, I didn't include meters at the labor camp. So we ended up driving out there to get meters on their sewer flows. The propagation study indicated that it'd probably reach out there as well, so we could change those meters and save a lot of drive time and so forth like that. The proposal is to change all, all of the meters and go to a radio read system. Yeah. I probably should put a beep in front of that. But anyway, it would, it would get my train of thought again. It would change all the meters, it would be radio read, so we would not read meters anymore, basically. That, the, just the office could, however that works, would, just for simplicity, they'd push a button, reading would happen and collect it. They could do that for also closing reads or starting reads as well. So, and then rereads would, would go away. The readings will be accurate at that point. Can you hear me? Thank you. So in the agenda bill that I wrote, it tells the advantages of this. Misreads go away, readings are activated by the front office. My employee that reads meters will have that much free time to do other work that we cannot complete right now. And to me, for me, that's the most important, is the free up some time there. I do want to say that we do read meters for District 14 and for Green Tank for the purposes of sewer billing. We will need to make a choice, whether, if we want to continue reading those to give an accurate monthly bill, or go back to the way we did on those customers prior to this, and that is we based it on a winter average, and that was their sewer bill. And that's an extra day a month in the winter months of reading. So it's something that we'll have to address.
So what you're saying is that half of the meters in town will be switched over, the other half will still be red?
All of the city's water meters would be switched to this new system.
Right, cities, but the district is half.
And there's about, probably about 500 meters that are not in our water system, but that, those customers take our sewer. And the only way we can actually build sewer accurately, or close to accurate, would be to read those. Otherwise, we can do what we used to do at the very beginning and have a winter average and then base the bill on.
So that's like 500 versus 2,500 or something?
Yeah. Yeah.
But that's a future thing? That's not, that's not something that we're discussing.
No, no. I'm just saying that I didn't want you to think that we wouldn't be reading, but we don't have to if we want to make that decision at some point in the future. We only read those in the winter months. That gets you your winter average, which is baseline usage for the year. So we'll be done by the time we implement this program anyway, and we have plenty of time to decide how we want to do that, non-city meters. The other advantage to this is it will notify, it will have ranges programmed into the, into the calculations. And if it exceeds that reading or that calculation, or is below that, it will notify the front office that there's a potential either a leak or there's no usage, we might have a dead meter. Saves a lot of time and questions. We can pinpoint it down to a certain hour at night and see if there's water used during that time. It's very valuable tool. The meter, meters are census meters. We use those extensively in the past. We've been using a different type of meter, but we've had, having problems with that one. Census is reliable, well-known, well-established nationwide for reading, and especially in the Northwest. The cost with tax is roughly about $1,303,000. I think you'll see it there. And I think, if you have specific questions, I have Tammy Rogers is here with Ferguson, who represents census meters. So if you want to, I'd recommend that we go for it, and, I mean, it's just $1,303,000.
I just might add some taste to it. If you all remember, this was itemized in the six-year capital facility plan, so this was a listed project in that.
Mr. Peterson.
Paul Ormeyer, I'm not sure. With the presentation at the last, last meeting, I remember hearing something, that there was a statement that there was an aspect of this that's not included in the cost. Was that, do you know what I'm referencing? What was that?
It's called the customer portal.
Okay.
And that is, allows the customer to access their account to view the usage, to view the history and that type of stuff. It comes in increments, and maybe, if you don't mind, I'll have Tammy explain that as far as how that, how you come to a price on that.
Because it looked like the presentation included a view of that. Then we are not going to get there with this system, or?
We have, I've given Paul the pricing on that. That's something that usually, it's an add-on to it if you so choose to go with it. So what it does, it's based on an annual fee of a minimum of 1,500 users. So 0 to 1,500, it's a stated fee. After that, they pro-rate for whatever, whoever goes on after that. And he's right. Customers are able to get on, they can see their usage, they can see what they used this time last year, they can see their average, yearly average. There is some cases, depending on what part of the program you do, it can be linked with your utility billing, your utility work, sorry, at the front office and City Hall. So they can look at exactly what a customer's looking at. So if they have a dispute with their bill, they can look in there and see what they're looking at and help them rectify it.
So, so right, the quote that I put, I had is, of course, one year for 1,500 customers is $27,475. That's it. That's for that setup and the first year. And then every year, there is a support.
A year-end support fee.
Support agreement. That's for 1,500 customers. We have 2,500 to, is that correct?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven in that area. So that would be an extra fee above that. I think the determination on your part would be is, do you think that many people are going to access it? Especially since we have the ability to notify if we see, because we'll be notified if there's a leak or if there's no usage.
Which is separate, yeah, of course, from this.
Yes.
So, okay. I was just, I'd heard that, and I was just curious. I didn't think I quite enough connected the dots there, but yeah, thank you so much. I understand that.
I mean, well, what if, what is the staff at the front office, if they're taking those calls, does that sound like something, I mean, and that's something that we could talk about later, once you guys have access to it, but?
We kind of already have part of that in place with Express Bill Pay, because any of our customers can create an account with that and go in and see their past 12 months of history. So if they, we can kind of still do that now, not to the degree of detail, I'm sure that we could with the census product, but?
This is something that can be added on at any time, once the platform's there. And you guys can do some more research on it, talking with your customers and see if it's something you think is going to actually be worth their while to do.
Sounds good.
Mr. Dickerson.
Can you elaborate on the funding for this, revenues, and any potential billing, you know, changes in the bill?
So I'll take that. It will be paid for with a portion of the revenue bonds that we took out from Community Bank last year. And I have done a, basically, probably about a 10-year forecast, and we're pretty, pretty good on rates, as far as just continuing to follow the plan that FCS helped us put in place. I don't foresee servicing that debt as making a noticeable change in your rates at all. I mean, it'll be minimal, so.
Okay, thanks.
Ms. Selby.
I would like to move that we review the installation of the census fixed base in the year we get to include the operating system and the installation replacement of all the meters in the system for a total not to exceed $1,335,000.
Is there a second? It's been moved by Ms. Selby, seconded by Mr. Peterson. I'm glad we're not talking about euro expense. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
I just thought it would be probably a good idea to put in our advance to remind ourselves to think about the user thing, like six months or a year after it's been installed.
I think, you know, we're, we're going to be, we're going to have to take another look at a community survey again, and that may be, that may be a very good item to deal with.
Where the funding for that might come from, yeah.
So, it's been moved by Ms. Selby, seconded by Mr. Peterson. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Ms. Kilgore, Agenda Bill 19016, street sweeper financing. And Mr. Rosatello, do you think we can move the podium a little further forward so there's a little less feedback?
Yeah.
Well, you know, if you guys, we could switch or something, then tell me.
Yeah. It's probably unidirectional, almost probably omni-directional. A little dance here.
Yeah.
If that's not there, can we swim back so we can see better?
Yeah.
Can you open up the comparison? Okay, so with the startup of the stormwater utility, our plan was to transfer our street sweeper from our streets department to the stormwater utility and then replace it fairly soon because it was due to be replaced a long time ago. And we actually had a couple more years on the replacement schedule before we were going to do it. But it really, really, really needs to be replaced, like now. So in order to replace your street sweeper, Mike applied for USDA funding in the form of a grant in a loan package. And at the state level, that was approved, but when it went to the federal level, it was denied. So that brought us to having to find another source of financing. And as part of the USDA loan package, we had, or Mike had solicited proposals from three other sources besides USDA to basically price shop lending. And it turns out that Community Bank was, these are the three other entities that we got, I think, and Community Bank actually beat out the USDA loan rate that we could have gotten. So it made sense to go forward with Community Bank. They've been great partners for the city the last few years with other debt that we've incurred. So this is basically an authorization for us to accept the financing to the global community bank and also secure foster cover as our bond counsel for the transaction. They are a firm that we worked with in the past. And I actually did go out on our own rosters to see who else I could get comparative pricing from or basically qualifications from, and they were the only firm that came up in the search on the roster, so that pretty much solved that issue. But I was basically walking through because we needed to, not because I really wanted to, because I liked working with foster covers, so. Anyway, with the bond counsel and all of the interest and bank fees for the loan, this financing cost us about $32,000 over the six-year implementation period. Yep. So I'm just looking for.
Questions for Ms. Kilgore. Mr. Dickerson.
You won't believe this, but I've been, this question may be for Paul. I've been following the price of street sweepers for about 25 years, and what does this one have that's so special? I mean, our last one was probably less than $100,000.
They're, they're not the quality that we use. We've checked the prices on, on several of the most popular models, and they're all between $230 and, and it's just, you're, probably the biggest driver on the cost of sweepers now is the environmental issues on diesel engines and the, and the cost that that adds to the machine.
Otherwise, the operation is pretty similar. Other than that, the operation is pretty similar.
Yeah, I mean, we'd go to a vacuum-type sweeper. You know, you got the rotaries at the rear end of the, of the machine that look dry and push up gravel, but it doesn't suck up everything that we want.
I'd have, since I didn't see a picture.
Mr. Cleveland.
Could someone describe some of the problems with the current one? I don't distrust that it's in bad shape, but I was just curious about what, why is it that it, is it had a little bit ahead of schedule in terms of its replacement?
I would say we're behind schedule in this sweeper. It's, it should have been replaced probably eight, eight to 10 years. You know, this, this is a whole piece of equipment in terms of, and for that, that is, that is out every day, probably six hours a day, cleaning streets, doing other work for us. It's used significantly. And it, it's, dealing with, with what you're sucking up, rocks, gravel, all that type of stuff, wears on it. We've replaced several major pieces of it two or three times, and we're at the point where if we don't do something right soon, we're going to have to make another major repair. That's probably going to be $10,000, $15,000.
And what's the life of the new one?
I would hope we could get 20, but you know, realistically, you shouldn't be planning on that.
This one is how old?
It's got to be, we bought that probably late 90s. I don't have a specific.
I thought, I was remembering something like 18 years ago. It's. I do remember when we went from the triangle-shaped one to the present one.
And then we'll be planning ahead for the next one, right?
Yep. And we did plan ahead a little bit for this one, too. We have saved some money. We might not end up needing this whole 260, because we did the last two years put money into the equipment replacement plan for this purchase. So I think we have $100,000 in there. This would be worst-case scenario.
And Paul's going to drive it in the parade, right? And Paul's gonna drive it in the parade, right?
I don't have my CBL anymore.
So, how much would it cost to get that out now?
Let the youngsters drive that.
Mr. Peterson.
I agree. We motion authorize administration to accept the financing proposal from Community Bank. I'm taking Foster Pepper as bond counsel to prepare the necessary tax opinion required as a condition of financing.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Peterson, seconded by Ms. Sherman. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Ricard, the Pries Mainmont Annexation, South, what, 8th?
So, this is an annexation of 4.78 acres. It's off of 8th Street, just south of Vassal Vianni's property. Little history, the western boundary of the property was part of our original incorporation in 1945 and then from '74 through '78 is what created the island around it. So, it's been around for quite a while, so, the applicant is Dan Pries and Roger Maintenance. They purchased the property to, for to subdivide it into their residential lots. The proposed zoning would be single-family residential. And we're here tonight to ask the council to accept the annexation as proposed, establish the zoning of, or, of a single-family residential and require the simultaneous adoption, excuse me, I just said that, and require the assumption of all or any portion of existing city indebtedness to the area and then to set up public hearing date of February 26, 2019.
Questions for Mr. Ricard? Ms. Selby.
I would like to move that we accept the Pries Mainmont Annexation as proposed, requiring, and at the same time, require the adoption of zoning regulations and assign the zoning of a single-family residential, require the assumption of all or any portion of existing city indebtedness by the area to be annexed, and set a public hearing date of February 26, 2019.
Second. It's been moved by Ms. Selby, seconded by Mr. Dickerson. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Ricard. Mr. Hartwig, you're back on deck. Authorization to loan a bid for construction of C Street project.
As you're aware, TIB chose C Street as a project for construction. C Street from College Avenue, where it ties into our Cars Project and to Larch Avenue. The, we've had a meeting with PBS, the design engineers, last week, I believe it was, and they are about 100% plans. But to keep the project on schedule, we're just asking today just for authorization to go to bid. I, I don't like to go to bid without your authorization because, you know, but I want you to understand that usually authorization to go to bid, we receive the bids, we were expecting we're gonna be awarding a bid. So, I just, to keep us on timeframe and get the best bids, we need to be able to go out as soon as we can to try to be ahead of other agencies that might be wanting to do work. So, we're asking, the project is roughly $2.5 million. So, it's a lot of money, but we got funding there, and we have the lease-up site for the utility. This is gonna be everything. This is, this is an entire project, with water, wastewater, storm, new road, and then we're gonna do conduits for the future communication if, if we have interest in it. So, we'll put the conduit in. So, it'll be a nice project to make that area look a whole lot nicer.
Questions for Mr. Hartwig, Mr. Dickerson, and Mr. Peterson.
Probably seen old designs for this, but does it include any entries in the side streets and so forth and kind of straightening out that crook in the, in the street?
It, yeah, it lines everything up. The intersection's in, it, it wraps around at each intersection and goes in probably about 20 feet just so you can get the radius for the ADA crosswalk there. And then, the only place that I, that I don't see it lining up is, is the private lane of Ash, which is not under view. But it, all the radiuses are installed at ADA complacency as mandatory.
Are you talking about the intersection at Larch?
Yeah.
No, that, that doesn't change.
We stop, we stop, we stop before Larch.
As I recall, I could be wrong, but one side or the both sides maybe. The street was angled one direction, and we needed to tweak it slightly, the curve, so that the street...
Well, we, we've got the right-of-way to make it, make it straight.
Right-of-way, so we've got all that.
Yeah, yep.
Mr. Cleveland.
I'd like to motion to authorize staff to advertise and receive bids for the reconstruction of C Street from Larch to College.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Cleveland, seconded by Ms. Selby. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr., Mr. Hartwig. Mr. Gordon, College Avenue Traffic Assessment.
Mayor, this is one you folks have seen before. This is the issue that we addressed back in January last year and then again in March, where we had some concerns expressed about the community as a function of College Avenue. And if you recall, we decided to table that, where you folks decided to table that until we got through the substantial completion, we're there. And what we're doing is we're coming forward and asking whether you want to move forward with the study to take a look again for striping and marking, use of bites on College Avenue, speed limits, site triangles, and a lot. So, that's, all this is, is we're just revisiting it and see if this is something we're...
Question for Mr. Gordon.
And obviously, you mentioned all the aspects, but also turning lanes, of course, have been included.
Yes, absolutely, because that's to do with the parking and...
I mean, obviously, yeah, okay.
And the downside, of course, is if we do modify the striping, it's somewhat difficult to get rid of the stripes without grinding, and it just, there are some impacts, so.
Ms. Sherman.
This isn't a budgeted item, so where is that money come, or it says that it's not a budgeted item, so where would that come from?
Have we not budgeted on it?
Did it budget it?
Okay, I guess it's not a budget item, and I don't know where the money would come from. I think it would have to be something out of the whole lot of our...
No, just from other fund dollars.
The fund dollars, yeah.
And there's enough to cover that?
Oh, yeah.
It's a $25,000 max is what we're asking for, so.
Mr. Dickerson.
So, have the inquiries and complaints kind of tapered off?
I have not heard any recently. That doesn't mean somebody else hasn't. I don't know, you folks, whether or not you...
I get a...
I do.
I get a few.
I do.
I complain.
Now, if the recommendation comes back that it's okay, would that just be kind of money wasted? $25,000?
No, I don't think so.
No, because, oh, sorry.
Was I asking you?
That's why I said, sorry, I wasn't recognized.
Ms. Selby.
I would argue that the money would not be wasted because then, when people had concerns, we could actually show them that we have looked at it and we have professional opinions that it's correct.
Agreed.
So, this would cost about the same as maybe an additional police officer?
Oh, no.
No.
Not even...
Not a good one.
I must be getting back to 20 years.
Maybe further.
This spam, starting with $22,000.
Oh, this is, this, this, this may be three months of pay and benefits.
I don't, just off of my opinion, because we do need discussion before we vote.
Yeah.
I still, I just don't, if things are going smooth and the complaints are down and we don't really need a reason to show somebody, well, here's the proof of, you know, because it's just another opinion, really, is what it is. And something we should've done beforehand, I think, and I think we're, we're kind of, we're trying to come within this. I don't, I think people have gotten used to it, so I'd rather save money.
Mr. Cleveland.
I'm kind of inclined to save the money myself. I was wondering about accident statistics.
I don't have those available, I'm not aware of any, not recently on College Avenue. Maybe some of the rest of you have, except for, we didn't have one bicyclist take a punch somewhere towards 12th Street at one point, but other than that, we, I don't have any.
Is that person in the room?
No.
My observation, there have been complaints, and I, I think the entire process, even with the school crossing, well, university, you know, appraisal, how that's working, and it doesn't take somebody very long to look at, the people on the south end here are basically ignoring the turn signals. You can see the wear patterns of cars where they just go straight and cut across to all, yeah. It's becoming irrelevant where the markings are in many places there, on 10th, 8th, and, you know, the other street. But, so, anyway, yeah, I think, and I think the future, too, as we look at the bicycle connection between what's south of here, what may be happening down Whitman and what we've got going here at our new construction there in front of Wabba, College Gym, how to connect that all into a coherent bike path perhaps in the future, connecting to different regions. I think, if I'm understanding, that would be included in part of this...
Yes, it would be that in part of it. And really, this is a, and some of us have all seen that with discussion. It's really, we haven't seen a level of accidents that would force us into a situation where we have to address it, but it's just, it's really a level of service issue in terms of what we would like to see.
As I recall in previous discussions, as part of the design of the Cars Project, there was a similar study done. We had that answer, this is how you, we think we should do it. So, we're essentially duplicating that kind of study?
It was done in advance as a part of the design for the project. We did bring some of the issues to council at the time. Whether or not their projections have come to pass is another question. If we're seeing complaints at a level we think require another review or a look, or maybe to substantiate we did the right thing, then that's what this is for. It's a second look.
Ms. Selby.
One of the things that I recall from the previous study was that the, some of the turn lanes were to reduce the time waiting on the side streets.
That's right.
Especially in future years. And so, part of the idea for this one was to say, well, if we loosen that constraint, would that change it? And then, I don't believe that the previous study looked at speed limit, which is one of the things that's come up a fair amount, as well as the bicycle thing. So, I see three reasons why I think it's worth taking a second look.
Agreed.
We, we never relied on a study before to, to set speed limits, and they certainly need change in other places, too, you know, that I've seen over the years. That's just my opinion. And we, we have set speed limits variable from what they were previous to the Cars Project. They're now a different standard, and they're posted.
We, we are supposed to have a speed study if we change speed limits outside of what the RCWs dictate.
Oh, right.
And within city limits, it's supposed to be 25 miles an hour.
Is that for arterial, or?
That's for everything.
I guess it's not always a verb, but there is an RCW.
So, so the study that went into effect for the Cars Project actually set standards?
We just use exactly the same ones, I think, pretty much in the same locations. There may have been set changes. We just said we'll take what we've got, and that's, that's how we approached it. I didn't have the history necessarily on all the different speed studies that were done, if any, on College Avenue, so we just adopted what we had. No change.
Further discussion? Mr. Peterson.
I move to authorize staff to issue requests for proposals, consultants to perform the College Avenue traffic assessment.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Peterson, seconded by Ms. Sherman. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign?
Aye.
So, I believe that it's affirmative for Ms. Selby, Ms. Sherman, Mr. Dickerson, and Mr. Peterson, and a, and the negative for Mr. Cleveland. Thank you, motion passes. You're not done yet, Mr. Gordon. Agenda Bill 19020, Lamperty Overlay Project, Request for Engineering Design and Construction Proposals.
Thank you, Mayor. Another transportation-related agenda item. As you know, we were awarded just shy of $30,000 for an overlay in Lamperty. We actually applied for two segments. Meadow Brook to the south in front of Walmart was not awarded, however, this section was. And we're looking at an overlay along that section approximately, oh, several hundred feet to the east of the intersection of College Avenue all the way over to Larch. And the project entails an overlay, and also entails some sidewalk and ramp improvements along that stretch. In addition to that, we're trying to incorporate street trees as a part of that project as well. Because some of those, as you probably noticed, are ailing, or gone, or both the above. It's sort of looking to see if we can figure that part of it. So, what this does, it actually does two things. At one, requests, because it's an overlay, it's not a full design, it's a quasi-design. We'd like to get a firm on board to actually do the design for us, layout where all the different sidewalk panels need to be replaced, where the ramps need to be redone, so forth, give us the specs on the overlay, a schedule, and project management. And then on top of that, we'd also like to request for the same project the authorization to go to bid for it. Kind of like Paul was saying, we'd just like to move forward and get it done. That's a project slated for this year, and we're already into January, so we'd like to move forward on that. So, in brief, I think you've seen this project before. It's just over 1,000 feet of improvements. It'd be a good improvement. It's something actually, which is kind of neat that we're actually doing something within the regular scheduled improvement timeframe for roads, that way it's 70 years. We're getting something between 15 and 20, so, it's good.
Questions for Mr. Gordon?
What, what costs $32,000 for an RFP?
That's, that's our portion of the effort.
Of the project?
Yes, about, about 10%, maybe even 90%.
Thanks. I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion to authorize staff to, one, request proposals for engineering, design, and construction services, and, two, advertise for bids for construction of the Lamperty Overlay Project.
It's been moved by Ms. Sherman, is there a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by Mr. Cleveland, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Gordon. Mr. Rizetello, Resolution to support Department of Natural Resources' Small Community Forestry Assistance Grant application for replacement of street trees.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. So, this grant program, we now applies to us since we are a tree city and we can apply their small community forestry program, and that's what this is in essence. We've applied for about $15,000. I've applied for a license pass, it'll end up being $10,000 because that's what it always ends up being. But ultimately, this is to replace the dead and dying trees along Lamperty because the ones that we've put in were not really the correct ones for the road right of the way. So, we do have a tree list now, it was adopted by this council and recommended by Park Board. Park Board members that are helping in picking a type of trees for this section. So, yeah, this is just a resolution expressing, report, expressing support for this because we need to get this grant application into Department of Natural Resources. In a couple weeks, we were shortlisted, so I feel free to come and get it.
Questions for Mr. Rizetello, Mr. Dickerson.
Will there be, will there be any attempt to correct the uplift that's damaged the sidewalks around the trees in Lamperty?
That, that is part of this project, fixing those heaved sidewalk panels and then the trees that are causing that and are dying because it's hidden sidewalk panels and a lot of other stuff, pulling those out, getting the correct ones in there, pull the right way.
Any other questions? Any other questions? Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve Resolution 19-002 in support of the State Washington Department of Natural Resources, 2018, Small Community Forest Assistant Grant Request.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Dickerson, seconded by Ms. Selby. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Hartwig, Authorization to advertise for proposals for design of Southwest Sewer Lift Station and Trunk Sewer.
We're looking at, we're looking at a regional sewer lift station down at the southwest area of town. That's the area across from the high school. What we're anticipating and hoping is that we will have a lift station set back, basically near the end of the Christians and McCarran property development potential. Have a large lift station there that will serve the region. It will eliminate, it will help allow us to eliminate the lift station six there at College and Lamperty, in that subdivision right there. Everything would flow down with this one. And then we already have an easement to get it up to, up to majority road. This would also, it would, it would design the lift station, it would design the trunk sewer that would be going up that, up that development to College Avenue, and then up College Avenue to the lift station, and then up to, towards the highway and crossing the highway to service future developments south of SR 125. Like to get that done. And you know, ultimately, a lot of this will be funded, not the design, but it'll be funded through connection fees, development fees, should we get that development to go. But it's really important. Yes?
Mr. Dickerson.
You touched on my question, development fees. I was going to ask you the timing and doing it in advance, as opposed to knowing how much the impact fees may contribute.
Well, I think, I think the, the big thing, and Mike will add to it, I think we need to set ourselves up for development, especially commercial development. If we don't, we're always going to be behind, and we may not get that commercial development. So I really believe that we, as a community, need to take that initiative to make areas developable. And the biggest issue we have in this area is sewer. And I think it's really critical. If we want development to happen, we got to plan it in and make it possible.
Do you think there's a large enough project there to pay for it?
Well, I think, I, I wouldn't say that it would pay for all of it because we, we need to make improvements to our system as well. That relocating and eliminating the lift station, that whole lift station at, at the end of Pepperidge. So there's, there's community input that we need to put into this to make, to make the whole community sewer system better. And I think it's really important.
Mr. Rosatello, would you like to talk about some of the conversations?
Well, I mean, a key thing with this for not only serving country estates, area and commercial drive, is it does sort of have McCarran and Christianson property. And I will say, we're very close to landing something very good on that, but we need the sewer to be able to play with for that property. And because of some issues that happened to our neighbor, we're not suddenly actually very good if we can get the wastewater. And as far as impact fees, connection fees covering everything. Now, if we get our wish with the UGA where eventually we get in like Pepper's Bridge and Amherst area, I have faith that would cover that. As far as McCarran and Christianson alone, not so much. But regardless, we need this trunk line to make the McCarran and Christianson property go, plus provide the capacity for Meadowbrook area, country estates, commercial drive. I mean, it covers a lot of areas that already exist.
So I know this is kind of technical stuff, but you're saying the line that comes down from country estate would actually go down and flow to the other?
Country Estates is already served by Lift Station Six. That's that one in Pepperidge Place.
Right. And that would be replaced?
Well, that lift station, we would, we would want to replace it with a new one way farther back.
So the, so the flow would actually go down?
Yeah, we just continue, continue with gravity down to there. You know, you want to limit the number of lift stations you have. And so that, that's why, if you're going to put a big one in there, you want to get rid of this one. And it's really, that's, that's the key, that's a key part of this.
Got you.
Ms. Selby.
I would like to move that we authorize staff to advertise and receive proposals for the design of the Southwest Area Sewer Lift Station and Trunk Sewer Main.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Selby, seconded by Mr. Cleveland. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Go forth, Ms. Administrative Fees Resolution, Ms. Kilgore.
Okay, this is our annual update to our administrative fees resolution. And in the agenda item, I've broken it into two sections of the fees that we're changing somehow in this resolution. I've broken it into fees that you all have previously authorized during the year that are just coming into play as of January 1st. And then a section of these that have not come before you before for optimization. So I'm going to go over the not previously authorized list in a little more detail than the others for you. So the, just to start running down the list, the building and grading permits and plan check fees, those are mandates to change those pricing prices, right? Yeah. So we're just changing those after directive from the state. Plan check fees and reinspection fees, that's... Sorry, John. Can you check in on that one?
Yeah. Who wants to talk about that? So the plan check fees, most of our reviews are done internally, but occasionally, like on a commercial project, we'll send the building package out for the structural review. So we've clarified that any third-party reviews are covered or billed back to the applicant. And then we had some changes to the demolition permit fees. Most communities do like a, a flat fee for a demolition permit, especially if it's a smaller structure. We'll have an additional fee if it's a structure that's 60 years or older. An additional, it's a hundred dollars versus the 60 because there's a little bit more review that goes into review with potentially historic structure. The signs sections, those aren't really, we already charge building permits for most signs. A new fee would be for the sandwich board signs with new businesses hopping up on College Avenue. We're seeing more of these sandwich board signs that are out in the right of the way. So we, those things are a liability. They're tripping hazards, often are not removed overnight. So there are potential for, you know, kids to move it out in the street or something like that. So we need to start acquiring liability insurance on those signs annually. So minor fee there. But the, but the signs that mount on the walls and things like that, we already charge. But we, right now, we use the valuation base, which is, most communities don't do that for wall-mounted signs. They have a flat fee. But for the pole-mounted and monument signs, it would still be the same thing. It would be a valuation based. So we just had some clarification there. We wanted to get that in, in the fee resolution. Solar panels, we require permits for solar panels right now. There's a push from the state level to make that process easier. Most communities are doing it over the counter, essentially the back, flat rate for that. However, on the commercial ones, where there are larger setup, more inspections are required. So we're doing the, we're keeping the valuation based on the commercial ones. Then we have some for adult family homes and assisted living and childcare providers. So those are people that operate those sort of businesses. They get their permits and licensing from state agencies, but they, they rely on the local jurisdictions to do the inspections to make sure, like in adult family home, that they have the proper signage and that sort of stuff. But we've never had a way to capture those visits that are building inspectors that are going out on those. So it's kind of unfunded mandate from the state. So we've covered some costs there. And that's, and then further down in Section 4, quite frequently throughout the year, I'll get requests from lending institutions to have a certified letter sent of what is going to be missed for a business. And that takes time. So that, that rate is just what it costs for me, for the city to employ me for an hour. And that's roughly what it takes to send out a suit of letter. I think that covers all of it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Good job, Sarah.
Just to finish out that list, looking to the items that the IP, that is changed by, I don't know, just the state or the federal, whatever that background check is, they change that fee on a regular basis. So we're just changing ours to match because we remit that to, that portion of the fee to the agency. And then we took civil services testing fees out of the fees resolution because we actually don't charge people to take those. We say we do in our resolution, but we don't actually do that. So that was requested to be moved by Human Resources. And then down in the bottom section of the items that you all have previously authorized the pricing of, and this is just formalizing those fees and rates in our annual resolution. So water utility, there is one addition to the water utility and the sewer utility fee structure, and that is that we changed, so for accessory dwelling units for our connection fee, we've been charging the same as a single-family residence, but because it's an accessory, we feel like it doesn't really justify that large of a connection fee. And we'd like people to actually comply with paying their fees instead of, you know, trying to do things shady. So we just established a $500 connection fee for accessory dwelling units. Feel like that's a fair amount for the type of unit. So again, that applies to water and wastewater utilities. And then we're just adopting the rates that you all already authorized. We added the stormwater system charges section to this resolution. And again, those fees have been authorized already by you all. And then the farmers market fees, that whole fee structure was revamped. And I think you guys have already talked about that as well. So those are the changes to this version of the resolution to be retroactive to January 1st.
Questions for Ms. Kilgore.
Mr. Peterson. Ms. Kilgore for Mike. The word is getting out what the stormwater fees are. I'm sure, what has been your experience with comments about that coming back to the city? I was just at a, a local board before this, and there were some comments about the fee. And I know we've done a study, it's in place, we've spread it over the population. There's a, we have a basis for it that can be defended. But I guess there's always an opportunity, perhaps not now, but it's something to look at that again. What's the input back to you from the community? Or just a general, general sense of?
Well, I mean, first, people are willing to go about it, but once you fully explain it to them, they get it. And I've sent them, let's tell newsletters, we did YouTube videos on it, grapevine podcasts for last like nine months. So once you send all of that stuff, there is a voluminous amount of information on this. Where, once folks fully understand that, it seems to go away. And, and also, it's explaining that we were lucky, we were able to get away with it as long as we did because our neighbors, a lot of folks have had this for years, and all, all charged us more than us. So.
I've, my experience has been that, that the large, the large, the larger facilities really struggling with why us and why, why so much? And just before the, the last meeting was at this afternoon, I spent some time with one of the larger churches talking about how all that utility worked, and how it was all, how it was all calculated out. So that they get given understanding of, here's, here's what we're doing and why. And my, with all of those, my experience has been, once you tell them, you know, we're not, we're not building anything with this. This is really just trying to, to do the absolute minimum required by the federal government and the state to get this started. And this isn't really worth it.
Yeah.
We've got things, we've got things to buy and people to pay. And, and you know, as always, we'll take a look at those rates as time goes on, make sure they cover the basics of the utility. But once they get that, people seem to be pretty happy. You know, I think Mike's done a really good job of, of laying out how, what, where, when, and why. It's just when, when someone gets an $800 utility bill, when they're used to something a little less than that, they really want a, really want a good solid explanation of what you're doing with their money.
Okay. Thank you.
Questions for Ms., other questions for Ms. Kilgore?
I'll make a motion to authorize Resolution Number 19-003, adopting the city fees and charges for 2019. Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Sherman, seconded by Ms. Selby. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Kilgore. And last, but certainly not least, Mr. Hartwig, Mr. Rosatello, and myself, Declaration of Water Emergence.
Do you guys have to say it all at the same time?
Yeah. It's a chorus.
I'll kind of give you the brief history here of what happened over the weekend. I got a call on Saturday. We had a alarm for well number three, and the, it was an over temp in the motor, and it was shut down. Well, number three is our largest well. And that pump, we, so we couldn't run it. We turned on District 14's only well, as the lead, lead well. And our well number two that is lifting is our backup well. And that's what we have. So right now, we are handling it and making it. But I, so anyway, Sunday morning, I called Mike, and he informed the mayor. And I believe that you were then informed of our issue. I've also contacted the city of Walwa. So they're on board if we, if we need to turn the enter tides on. Where we are now. So we had, and I want to personally, even though he's not here, I want to thank Kevin Wolpert. He is our water quality guy. And it's a blessing to have him. And I'm very grateful for the work that he does. He has, he has taken that assignment on and has done very good things, positive things. He has the contacts that we need in regards to managing this, this crisis issue. So he went immediately on Saturday and started calling H&amp;N Electric for our controls, and Lane Pump, that who's our pump people, and started talking with them, getting them on board. And they started researching. And then we had, Lane Pump came out Monday. So Kevin was here most of the day Monday with Lane Pump and with H&amp;N. H&amp;N, like I said, does the VFD and that type of controls there. Lane Pump does the pumps.
VFD meaning?
Ah, variable frequency drive. Sorry. And it's what runs, runs the motor. And then Lane Pump got immediately on the phone, started checking around to determine the history. The motor that's on well number three, it was a bad series. The motor that's on well number three, it was a bad series of motors. It's 400 horsepower, but it's too small, and so when they put all the wiring inside and all that, and it turns on and is operating, and the frequency is coming in from the VFD, it creates too much heat, and it's not able to cool itself. This has been a common problem now with that motor, and people have failed, and they just throw the motor away. So, we didn't want to spend money rewinding that motor to get it back on if we didn't have to. I was ready to say we need to if... Because usually, you won't find motors on the shelf. So, Lane Pump, James with Lane Pump called around, found a 450 horsepower motor in Chico. We're supposed to get it here on Thursday, and hopefully, we'll have maybe that well back on Friday. So, that led us to the declaration of an emergency, and...
Well, and then, part two to this is that with the well one, well number two situations, the State Department of Health people are fascinated, I'm going to say the least, where we've given them plans, and then it's finger pointing, do I review or you review, or does someone review it? Because no one knows what their job is over there. So, I called them on Sunday expressing my concerns over this situation at hand, and I was told to move quicker on procurement and get this thing going because I still... We still have concerns about meeting summer demand here. They recommended to do a declaration, that way we could skip some of the bureaucratic steps with this, and then plus the well number three situation, someone lumped itself to that regardless, but with all this, it definitely did. So, that's what you see in front of you. That way, we can move quickly on well number one and number two. Well, we just had meeting with RH2 this afternoon. Pretty much what's going to happen is so we can move quicker, we're basically going to end up on the contract, put the hole in the ground for the well number two over at Maple, and get a pump to basically start pumping water from that since it's in the system. And then, we'll run a line out for Christ Community Fellowship, and then, because there's a lot of other minutia on that one, with the Christ Community Fellowship getting that well up, we're going to be doing that this summer still, but at least getting the hole and the raw material so we have that secondary source, and apparently, we have an extra submersible pump, we can throw in this hole. That's the pathway forward on this because we met with RH2 this afternoon on that. So, yeah, that's the brief synopsis of this situation, so...
But it's critical that an emergency be declared.
Yeah. But, and I talked on the phone today with Dennis Hewitt, his boss, and his boss's boss, Department of Health, and they've apologized, and they're aware of the various layers of this situation.
Mr. Peterson?
So, you know, in fact, this has been kind of an awakening for us because we were in this situation in the hot summer, weren't we, with the one well, and everyone limping along, correct?
Yeah, yeah. We were fine as long as that well worked. If that would have happened in the summer...
So, the fact that that well has failed has kind of been a realignment of our, of the clarity of the issue, and with that, the emergency then allows us to move forward to drill where existing piping is at and have basically fast-track a well where we now have two good wells in the ground by the end of the summer.
It allows us to...
In total.
It allows us to move a little quicker now. As far as getting all the permanent stuff and the mechanical and the wellhouses and stuff like that, that's still going to take longer because they special design that kind of stuff, or it's not just off-the-shelf stuff you pick. But as far as the ability to get water out of the ground and put it in the system, it's not going to look pretty, but it will exist on Maple, and at this point, that's what we need, the ability to move water from ground to the pipes and out.
Mike, I apologize if you made... What is the timeline on getting that up in Maple?
We don't know exactly yet. Okay, I really can't tell you. We put a hole, I mean, we told the... Because of the Department of Health delay in getting us approval, we had to tell the contract, the drilling contractor, to draw on hold for a little bit. And so, he gets other jobs, so now we got to try to schedule that part in. One thing I wanted to say, the declaration of emergency also gives us the ability to, for lack of better words, bypass some of the bidding requirements because of the emergency, and that's the other critical piece here.
I will make an addition to that, is that really for us to... The ERTIS, we have to declare an emergency, and this just...
Yeah.
I mean, this may save an hour, but it's already there. It's done.
Well, and this puts the exclamation point on the Department of Health issue because in my dealings with them, that needs to occur, so...
Mr. Peterson?
Paul, I'm just trying to remember, when did we replace that well that failed, I mean, that pump? Didn't we do that?
We did that in about 2010, and then it failed in 2014, and we had it rewound, and here it is, about four or five years, and it failed again.
Other questions? Ms. Selby?
I would like to move that we approve the declaration of emergency. Or, I'm not sure what exactly, how exactly...
Is it resolution number 19?
Resolution number 19-005?
Yeah.
Declaring water emergency.
It's been moved by Ms. Selby, seconded by Mr. Cleveland. Any further discussion?
And I would just like to thank Paul and Kevin for working throughout the weekend, making sure we didn't get in a situation that was greatly appreciated.
You're here.
Ms. Selby?
Well, and that's basically what I wanted to say, is I wanted to thank Paul and Kevin and Mayor Hartwig and... Mayor Hartwig, sorry.
You got the job, Paul.
Hey!
Cootie, Paul.
Let's say Hartwig.
The mayor and Mike for just responding to that and keeping us all informed. I know it was a... Not the way you wanted to spend a three-day weekend, but I really appreciate it. And I don't know what is wrong with this project. I mean, this is the same one that, you know, because people were throwing temper tantrums, we couldn't get it done because of the capital budget, so...
Well, being an old military planner, all I can tell you is, one of the maxims of planning is, is no plan withstands first contact with the enemy.
And the enemy is us.
And they... Well, the enemy is us, but this has been one of those things where it goes forward, but not without hiccups along the way. And I would like to thank you both. Paul's had a great deal of his Sunday talking to Mike and I about what's going on, what do we do, or where do we go?
Just one more question. Has there been any publicity about this, or...
We did not go out with any public warnings, and we didn't do that based on our ability to provide drinking water.
Thank you. I've been kind of mum about it too, just wondering.
And Paul's statement, you know, Paul is very clear, if this had happened in April, it would be a much different situation. And that, those are one of the things that on Sunday morning, we were talking about. Do we put this on Nextdoor, do we kick out something on Facebook? You know, my consideration was getting emergency management's local call out that'll call every phone number within a defined area to tell people to minimize water use, and based on the advice and so forth, that's worked out well. Now, we don't think we need to do that yet.
So, if the pump, new pump arrives on Thursday, how long will it take?
Well, we're still working through all that, again, using H&amp;N for the control people, Lane Pump for the motor, and then Wal-Wal Electric as the electrician. We think the last we've heard is that we have to replace the wire from the VFD up to the motor because it's going to require a heavier hill. But Wal-Wal Electric's getting prepared for that. If the motor comes in on Thursday as they anticipate, Lane Pump said they'd be here at noon to put it in, Wal-Wal Electric said they'll be here, and then Steve Boy with H&amp;N, if we need him, he'll be here.
So, it's basically just to dismount and add some additional wiring?
Yeah. So, I'm hoping we'll have a well up and running on Friday.
So, with that, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you once again, Mr. Hartwig, Mr. Rizetel. That's the end of our active agenda. We have two administrative reports, a request for proposals for inspection services, Mr. Gordon. And, just to make it easy, also abbreviated stormwater plan.
Okay, I'll take a breath between the two, hope they won't take much longer than that. Really, just two items I want to bring to you in the future here. First introduction to our own. One is already on our fee schedule, and just has, allows us to go to spend as much or levy as much as 5% on a project for independent inspectors and engineering review where there's issues or things where we need support and help and so forth. We're running into that a little bit, and talk a little bit about the meter project in terms of freeing up a little bit of works time. So, our projects are demanding a lot of inspection time, to the point where it's really starting to hurt our bookworks activities out in field. So, we have this on the book, but we don't really have a way to hire anybody outside of what the administrator in America can actually allow us. I think it's a $15,000, Mike. So, some of these projects are larger, and they take more than that, so we're just proposing, or we'll be proposing, is that we put together kind of a pool of folks that can respond to engineering firms that can do inspection for us, and we work with them, call them up and say, "Hey, we need your help out here," and so forth. So, that's really all that is. We've never used that in the past, but I think at a point where we might want to start looking at it. So, in order to that, we need to be able to have somebody to go to that would set the stage for that.
So, that's different than the small works roster?
Yes, it is. Really, it's kind of different. It's kind of a hybrid because it is a roster, but it's something we do for a particular type of activity.
What makes small works go up to 100?
Yeah. Yeah, but this is alternately for inspections and engineer projects. We did some similar in coal tanks, and unfortunately, with certain developers who are having issues, it's dictated that we need to do something like this, so...
Anyway, already have it, just need a mechanism. The other one, if I can move on, if there's other questions, if I can move on, is just, we're looking also, and as we're going through the stormwater utility and looking at our scanners and so forth, we anticipate there's going to be a little bit of movement on this as we try and refine and make things work well for developers in our community. This is one of those, all I'm trying to do is bring forward another option for developers. What we're doing right now is we are trying to take as much as possible and have people put their stormwater in our streets so we can take care of it for them. It's kind of the approach we're taking because we don't really want to take care of it in their backyards, and that can be an issue, and a lot of communities run into the policing effort and trying to make sure that everything works in everybody's backyard. So, we're setting up our development code to actually, as much as possible, as much as the train will allow for it, is actually have them bring the water to our streets. If it's a larger development, they'll give us, they'll dedicate a stormwater facility, and we'll take care of it there instead of in somebody else's private area. That's the basic concept. We're not in trouble with that when their lots are below the street level, because water has a difficult time coming up hill. And so, this allows for an opportunity for us, or the designer, for that plant to draw a line, saying as much goes to the city, as much will go to private lots, and then they have, there's a method for them to certify that and say, "Yep, it's going to, it's not going to go to the city utility." The reason that is important is because our PDS permit does not require us to oversee waters that don't go there right away. Really, we're just responsible for our stuff, but... And so, we want to draw kind of a line between what's not our stuff and not their stuff. And this helps us do that, provides a mechanism, it means later on, as those parts of the plat develop, that don't contribute to our right-of-way, it means that when that building is built, that whatever they do in that property, they'll get certification by probably the engineer or somebody they retain that says, "Hey, it works according to the original design." And we have something on paper that says, really, that's not high water, it's being taken care of, that becomes a long-term issue for the property owner, it's their responsibility, and it's not the city's. So, that's what it is, it's another option as opposed to a full-blown storm design where we go through all the pieces, really puts the burden on the engineer involved with the plat, and actually speaks things up for the developer.
Questions from Mr. Gordon? Mr. Peterson?
Do we still have properties with large surface areas that run their, dump their runoff into the sewer system?
I think there's a few of those, and I'm aware of a few that the university has some older ones that I'm sure will get cleaned up over time, but, and I'm sure Paul probably knows a few that I don't know of, but I think for the most part, that's not, that's not as widespread as I think it is, so... But we'll find out, too. I mean, this is something that we're getting into as we go, and our new stormwater tech is really working out well, we appreciate his efforts and...
Ms. Selby?
So, just to be clear, by putting that statement on the plat, when someone purchases the property, that would show up in their title report, and they would get notified for that?
The reason we're doing, I'm proposing that is I'm really, I'm kind of afraid of having that requirement there. Somebody goes and buys the property, goes, a custom home builder goes and buys it, sets it up, and then he goes, "What do you mean? I have to actually be careful for my storm?" Yeah, you do. So, that gives them that over, and it's a mechanism for...
Yeah, that's good.
Other questions? Thank you, Mr. Gordon. That ends our agenda for the evening. There are four informational reports. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Someone's...
It's been moved by Ms. Sherman, seconded by Ms. Selby. Mr. Peterson? We're adjourned.